Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Selectmen's Meeting on August 19th at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
We've got a few announcements tonight. Just a caution to motorists. Many students are headed back to school starting this week and over the next couple of weeks. Please take extra caution on the roadways in the mornings and the afternoons. Buses will be back on the roads and children will be walking to and from bus stops and standing at bus stops. And the Board wishes all the luck to the Millville students for a successful school year. And a reminder for Labor Day, September 2nd, the town offices will be closed on that day. And also the Selectmen's Meeting for that Monday will be on the 3rd Tuesday night. Coffee with the Selectmen Saturday, September 14th at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Chestnut Hill Community Center. And also, Centennial T-shirts are on sale and available at the police station Monday to Friday from 9:00 to 3:00. A variety of additional sizes are now available. Cost is $12. The sale of the T-shirts will help the town raise funds to plan the 100th anniversary celebration in May of 2016. Please mark your calendars for fundraising kickoff event schedules scheduled for Sunday, September 29th at 11:00 AM. Excuse me, that's it for announcements. Now we have some minutes and warrants. July 15th at 6:00 PM. We have, I believe, everybody was there. I don't have that whole copy. Was that the meeting I was going to?
It was the last meeting we had to table it because there wasn't enough.
Okay.
Yeah, he didn't have a long one.
Okay. All right. So, do I have a motion to accept July 15th, 2013 at 6:00 PM?
Motion to accept the minutes of July 15th at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next we have minutes from August 5th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. And I was absent, so I'll abstain. As was I.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of August 5th, 2013, 7:00 PM.
Accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Okay. Now we have reports from town officials. Do we have any warrants this week?
No warrants this evening.
So first on the list is Veterans Agent, Mr. Barber.
Good evening. You all have a letter in your packets. I came to address the letter. Everybody have a chance to read it? I'd first like to say that I was very disappointed that somebody came to town to talk about me and I wasn't invited to the meeting. Seemed like common courtesy. I guess that's an indication to me about how Boston's going to do things. There are a variety of issues raised in that letter. All of them have been addressed. There is a, many ways of doing business. I do it one way and some of the people mentioned in that letter like to do it in a little different fashion. I was very surprised Boston sent somebody to the town and didn't bother to call me first. I would say of all the things mentioned in there, the monthly reports are not something that I have ever been overly diligent with. For the longest time since I did the job, Boston did them. They have in the last probably 18 months getting everything together on the computer and now they want each town to do them. And there's a big issue, at least in Millville, where if I pay somebody on the first, I paid them on the first. When I write a voucher, I wrote the voucher in the previous month. Boston sends out the tallies. The money was spent in the previous month. So when we sit down, and we being Lisa, the treasurer and myself, nothing adds up and it takes quite a while to straighten it out. Other towns spend the money differently, so the, you know, the 300-some-odd communities, Boston's happy with the way most of it goes, but it's always been a pain and they've always done it, so I haven't paid a lot of attention to it. I can assure you, Millville didn't lose any money in the process. It's always looked at. What we send in gets authorized before I spend it and as far as I know, Millville gets reimbursed for it.
So at this point, are all vouchers and the like all reconciled?
Just to show you how they do things, two days after it was reconciled, I got a call from Boston, "When are you going to reconcile?" And I said, "Go look at your computer." Again, I was negligent in not getting them done in time and fashion. The rest of that I can address and I wouldn't say was appropriate to do in our open meeting, but I will take responsibility for that. They're all up to date. I will make sure they're up to date in the future.
So, without getting into it, that was the first time that you had known that any of those things were an issue? So you read it?
No, wasn't, I get a call and I would, can't possibly do it here. I would dispute the fact, none of those VS5s or 6s haven't been done since Millville. I don't believe that. They showed Helen something or Lisa was able to go back into the computer, but you know, I've been in the town hall and I don't, there's no way I can prove it, so really, it's a moot point, but.
And it's someone you know?
It's certainly been done numerous times by Lisa and myself.
Is someone you know and have contact with?
No.
Okay.
In Boston?
Yeah.
No, it's all done by?
No, I mean in regards to the letter? Like someone you can call and just clear? No? Okay. That's, that's fine.
Again, I was shocked that he didn't take the initiative to call me first and say, "Hey Lincoln, can we meet at the town hall and discuss a few problems I have?"
Okay.
Never heard a word, didn't even know he was in the position. He recently resigned from this position a year ago in the town of Northbridge. He ran Northbridge, Oxbridge, Sutton and one other community. And all of a sudden, puffies in Boston doing that. And that's no way to do business. I don't think. Call people and have open communication and say, "Hey, this is going on, why is it going on?"
I was under the assumption you had already had conversations, so that...
Never spoken to the man face to face, ever.
But everything can be addressed and cleared?
It is, all addressed.
And cleared.
I spent quite a bit of time last week and the housing lady's all set. She has a personality conflict with one of my veterans and it boils over to me. I can tell you she's been starting with responses to me as she indicated I was to...
As long as our residents are...
I think if you interview any of the veterans that I deal with, they're pretty pleased with the service they get. There was one comment in there that I found very troubling and I brought to the Board in the past when we had our annual sit-down, and that was the fact that, A, maybe the town needed to do more outreach. And while I think that there are probably some people in town who have a legitimate right to some benefit offered by the federal or state government, none of them has indicated that in the town hall or to me. I have told you before, and I'm doing this on open television here, Boston is in a role of self-justification. They have an annual budget of $360 million this year and grows every year. There's a reason your taxes go up all the time. And I don't go looking for trouble. I'm more than happy to extend help any way I can, but if the Board wants me to set up an outreach program and go seek out as many beneficiaries as I can, and that's the direction of the town, then that's something this office can do. I don't know that it's appropriate. I think that has to come from this level, not from... Any other questions?
I don't know. All good.
If you have a question or somebody calls you, I appreciate knowing about it.
Yep.
And I will speak to, there's another training session in October, which when I get a chance to talk to him, I'm going to say. And they had a guy in Boston, you know, I can walk up to him and talk to him, but why isn't there open communication? You've got a problem, call somebody, tell them. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Council on Agent.
Hi. Before I start, I just wanted, I'll be quick, I just balled my stuff with me, so I'm not going to be along. I just wanted to introduce everyone to Jill Anderson, who is going to help us a couple of days a week. She's volunteering, so just so you have a face to put with a name.
Okay.
And then there's a couple of the other members here that everyone knows, Claudia, Lois and Ellen for moral support, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Just an update on what we've got going on is, first, we did, as a result of the MAP Grant, we did be selected for, to receive the van. Right now, we are still waiting for the state's information on that. It is based on what they've talked about with me on the phone, I don't have anything in writing, and I've made several phone calls this past week trying to get to the gentleman to see when we're getting the paperwork, but it looks like the responsibility would be anywhere from 9,600 to 11,600 for the town. That would be the 20% that we would be responsible for.
Okay.
Above and beyond that would be having to look at the gasoline, the driver component, transportation coordinator, but I think, given the number of transports we have, the driver can do both roles. I did work on the formula grant, so we can get that put in, and we did put part of the salary of the driver into that grant. We are a small town, so we are only going to get $3,900 on that grant, but that's what we're going to work on and see what we can do. The other component that we can take a look at is some fundraising. We don't have a Friends of the Seniors. We have a senior club, which really doesn't do fundraising. So I actually left Jill's sticky note that I handed her tonight to see if she's got anything at the town, at the senior center about a 501, what is it, 501, let's see, thank you. And see if there was any work done on that, to see if we can do that, establish a Friends Committee, something along that line. We are going to see if we can get the senior club, we're meeting with them on the, on this Thursday, to see if we can get some more involvement from them, some fundraising on their part to, for multiple items, and seeing what we can get done there. So we've got that to work on. Right now, we're open three days a week. Our goal is to increase that and we have, obviously Jill, who's going to help us out right now, there's a potential other volunteer who I have to talk with. I don't want to give her name up until I know that she's willing to do this. And that would be another aspect for us to take a look at. One of our largest focuses is really trying to work on the relationship with the senior club, get them more involved in working with us. So I think that it's, it doesn't cover the entire senior population in Millville. I think there's more people that we can get included in that, but the Friends opportunity is something aside from that that we have to look at and see what we can come up with. Since we met with you originally, we've got the newsletter that Mrs. Bowen has taken on the brunt of it. We started around 175 mailings monthly. We're up to about 350, 375, with not many being returned until this past week, I believe. So we're getting the information out there to them and we're trying to get word out there to increase the seniors coming to the center.
Good.
So, this fall, we're going to be doing the grass. Since it's all weeds, we're going to lay all that down and get that done. And we should have that, I would say, late September, early October, getting that done.
Good.
So, any questions? No?
None.
Thank you. Anything you guys want to add? No, the dance, I forgot the dance. There's going to be a dance on October 5th. The senior club is going to be sponsoring that dance and Mrs. Poole has taken the lead on that. So it's going to, we're going to have tickets for it and see what we can raise for money from that.
Okay.
And we have a couple of other ideas to talk, again, with the senior club and see what we can get them to do.
What time is that? 7 to 10?
7 to 11.
7 to 11.
At the club, at the senior?
No, no. We can't serve alcoholic beverages there, so we're doing it in another, yes, it's going to be a real dance.
Oh, all right, yeah.
So, the...
It's the BMW and Barstool?
Okay. Yep.
Is that on School Street?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to have tickets for that.
Excellent.
Because handicap is accessible, that's why, you know, there's not much.
Okay, good.
Please do.
That's excellent, all right.
Do you think maybe we could put it on cable? As an advertisement?
We will, yes.
Definitely.
Yep, we're going to put that, and obviously all of you will be invited, so. And Lois helping with the DJ.
I was just going to drop off my three kids.
I should state this as an adult-only party?
No.
So that's where we stand right now. I hope soon to have more information on the van component for you, but I do, I put my number on the cable, so I am getting calls from seniors and disabled in town who actually are wondering when we're going to get it. Right now, the vans from 2012 have not all been given out, so they're still dealing with the backlog there.
Okay.
So we do have policies and procedures and inspections and training and all that that we're going to review as a council and then see what we can come up with.
Okay.
And we do have Mr. Pimento from Blackstone who said he's willing to help, so that's something else that we will talk about.
Okay. All right.
No questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have the Flag Warden.
Good evening.
Another year down in the books, right? Yep.
Pretty much the same report. I probably answered the email, the emails that I get probably about 30 times so far this year. It's been pretty busy. Also, I replaced a pulley on, it's not one of my main, my main priority, not priority, but under my duties, I do also take care of the meeting house in the community center. So I replaced a pulley at the meeting house. All the flags been replaced at least once this year. We do have now a full complement of flags, so we don't have to, oh no, the flag's about to give way, got to run to Lowe's and go get one. We now have a full complement of flags for every flag pulling town in the flag locker. And that's due to a lodge pot, not only the approval of the Flag Warden's budget this year, but also a donation that was given to the Flag Warden's budget, or I should say, flag donations account from Congressman McGovern when he took a tour of the town. So that helped greatly this year in waiting for the budget to get approved. And so with next year coming, I don't really, this would probably be a good word for the citizens is that next year, I don't foresee us needing $350 for Flag Warden budget. That was really just to get us started and get all the stuff that we needed to get, so that in case someone does break down the solar powered light, now we can go out and just order one. So I think next year, we'd be able to cut that at least by $100, $150.
Okay.
And that'll be able to give something back to another department that really needs it.
Okay.
I have answered about five to 10 personal, not, but questions from citizens from town regarding flag etiquette and, you know, how to dispose of their flags. And it's been very nice getting those calls. It feels good.
Yeah, good.
But that's all I really have. Any other questions?
I have nothing.
I replaced a cleat, I drilled a bolt into the cleat at the veteran memorial park.
Okay.
It was kind of raggedy, it wasn't going to hold on any further, so I bolted it to the pole, which makes it a lot more secure and don't have to worry about the holly coming loose in a windstorm, so.
Great.
No questions?
Excellent.
Excellent, thank you.
Just for clarification, these mails you refer to, those are right from the Governor's Office, correct?
Yes, yes. All the flags I purchased now are coming straight from the Governor's Office. Whether they come from DC, actually, I want to touch on this, thanks for bringing that up, Helen. I was getting the flag straight from DC, from Congressman McGovern's Office, because the Worcester office didn't have a, per se, filing cabinet like Congressman Neal had in his Milford office, where it was full of boxes of flags. So I asked them if they could do that for the Worcester office and they took it, they took it to head and it's, get them from Worcester now.
Great.
Don't have to call Washington, have them shipped from Washington, so, unless we get a special request for one to be flown over to Capitol Building. In that case, then I'll get it from Washington.
But the emails, the orders you get?
Yes.
Come directly from the Governor's Office?
Yes.
When to move the flag?
Yes, all notifications I get via email either come from the Governor's Office or the President's Office.
Okay.
So I don't take any other word from really anyone else, unless we have a veteran in town that has passed away and he wasn't, he or she wasn't killed in combat, then I do lower the flag on the day of their interment. It's only right to do it for our veterans in town, you know, especially our WWII vets and Korean vets coming out.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Okay, first public forum. Correspondence, just a couple of things. We had the, we had an energy audit going to the elementary school and then basically, I mean, it's a big, long audit, but I won't read, but they sent a memo and, just to sum it up quickly, the motors for hot water loops, the HVAC system are all on VFDs, which is basically a, it saves energy, it's a motor controller that saves energy and it's better on the equipment for starting and stopping. The school's already equipped with that. To insulate the school, there's no incentives from any energy suppliers because we burn oil, so that would be an eight to 10-year payback, so it's financially not something we'd probably be able to do. And then also, the air intake on the HVAC systems have been locked out completely, which if somebody had to do work on our HVAC, HVAC systems, they would have to unlock them and let fresh air in because it's not code compliant right now the way it is, so. Who did do that, locking out these, these air intakes?
I assume it would be the custodial staff up at the school.
They also make mention that this is the same situation occurs at the high school and locked down.
Yeah, the high school's the same way, better than, as John knows, he works in that business.
I don't understand why, you've got a balanced building, you have to have so much CFM, so much fresh air coming into the building versus the air makeup. That makes no sense at all. What they did is they, now you don't have any fresh air coming, they locked it all out.
Because where, the reason they did it is they, rather than in the wintertime taking 10-degree air in and bringing it up to 70 degrees, they're taking the inside air and just receding it. So it does save energy, but it's, it's...
Yeah, it saves fresh air.
There's no fresh air for the students or the faculty to be breathing all day, so...
They should have a percentage of air.
Yeah, there needs to be, there is a, I don't know what the percentage, the minimum is, but...
5%.
I mean, but, I mean, that's an issue that should be fixed to the state minimum, at least, and I know it's going to end up costing us more oil, but you can't, you can't sacrifice heat savings for the, you know, for the health and well-being of the kids and the faculty, so. So we should probably ask the school department about that.
Northern Energy also made this statement that large gaps and cracks exist around every door and socket and roof wall joints.
Yep. So, but that's when they said wrapping, sealing the building would be an eight to 10-year payback, so. But that would be something that if we get an engineer to look at and we get grant money to fix that and this.
We've already had, we've already had the engineering report on those, we know about all that.
So this is just one of those grant things that we can hopefully get and make those decisions.
Was this, I'm assuming this memo?
Yep.
That you're reading?
Yep.
And this report are in conjunction?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something the Green Energy, because last week they were talking about how much money, if we reduce by 20%, I mean, do we already do something that they can utilize and they don't have to go back out and get done? That's where that came from? This came from the Green Energy Committee?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because see, like, a lot of this equipment that's in here, that where they, where they state, oh, it already has it, well, a lot of that equipment was already, you know, available 20 years, 20-plus years ago when they built the school, so. The only, the only thing is lighting that you could really make out at that school, but that's already been done.
The light? They have the sensors in each classroom?
I don't know if they got motion sensors, but I know they have the energy-saving lamps and ballasts. Whether or not the occupancy sensors were put in, I really don't know that.
Yeah.
There's occupancy sensors?
In each classroom?
Okay, so, see, there's another...
They're in the library, too.
And then I remember they did the energy audit for the senior center and because of the hours of operation per week and at the end of the month, or at the end of the year, it would cost us more money than we would save to, because that building was only what, seven, eight years old. That's all new technology anyway, so.
Well, all the ones with the biggest estimate payback per year were the buildings like the salt shed and the fire sea, you know, things that you're not...
I mean, the only place we could really save energy by fixing is this building, but we need one...
But the cost of it's so great.
The grant would have to be so large and, you know, that's just another thing we're going to cross our fingers to...
What, they said the grant is $130, Joe? With that 10, well, 40...
But without an engineering stamp.
140.
Audit.
140.
Audit.
10 administrative...
We can't get a grant.
10 was a bonus because the town has adopted a...
That plan, okay.
Okay.
So it's 140.
All right. Anything else on the school? So, then we had the historical met, they met as we asked them to do, and so, did everybody read that?
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to...
Do we need to notify the gentleman that filed, that, you know, wrote us the letter and Mr. Height came down and spoke to us?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is the historical sending the letter? I think he deserves a letter.
Yeah.
You know, are we going to stay, stand behind the historical commission? Are we going to decide otherwise? We asked them to do it, so I think he deserves an answer. I believe the way we left off was once the Board received the information back from historical, we would possibly schedule another meeting?
Yeah.
To determine how to proceed, so...
And then the historical was going to decide whether or not to put it in our hands to vote.
Right, and it looks as though they have done that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we want to set up a time where both of those parties would like to come back, and then we'll go forward from there. And that was it for Correspondence. Anybody else have, had any other thing on that before we move? Okay. So Appointments and Resignations. We have an appointment for Assistant Animal Control Officer. We have... We have um, also uh, one for, well, we'll just, we'll do this one for us, and this is Leonard Ranslow. And uh, everybody's uh, that had all their required queries, uh, the driver's background checks are all set, uh. So.
So maybe Gary can say a few words as to why he thinks Mr. Ranslow should be appointed?
Um.
You can feel free to have a seat, Gary, and just speak into the mic.
I met with um, Leonard, he uh, uh, first of all, he's available, all day long.
Okay.
And um, um, he's willing, he's never worked with animals before, but he's willing to learn the job.
Okay.
Um, even when his father is telling me that, um, obviously when he gets appointed, he would be awarded, I guess, a semi-annual cycle, which is automatic, but he indicated, even indicated to me that for a little bit until he had an idea of uh, what he was doing, he would even be willing to forego the twenty-five dollars per haul. You know, which is, you know.
Right.
You know, this shows that, you know, he's really interested in the job and
Okay.
You know, not to say that that's what the town would do, but
Right.
It's just uh
Okay. Alright.
Is there resources, uh, trainings or anything that you can help them set up with, or, or is it kinda on the job experience?
Well, there is a, uh, like the certification clause that is available.
Is that for animal control or for assistant?
For animal control.
Okay. Alright.
But there's something there if you wanted to ask.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Just um, the other, you know, way would be to, you know, on the job training, you know.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe eventually, um, you know.
Alright, and then
Pursue that.
You gotta be trained on the disposal of, you know, what we do.
The whole, the whole job.
Okay.
Okay.
It's gonna take time.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's not, there's a lot to it, it's not something that, you know.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
You know, other departments don't wanna be involved in, you know, just try to get better coverage, you know.
I know the police department was helping out during the day while you went out of town and it's, it's catching up on, you know, putting them back on some of their own work, so.
I guess they don't have the manpower that they, they want to do.
No. No, we don't.
I think that's a philosophy issue.
Yeah, cause we usually have only one officer. And if, if he or she may be in Manden or at the time.
Well, you have one officer and if they have to go out of town to take care of something, that's
Yep, and then there's nobody here, so. It would create an issue.
It's, it's, you know, it um, it's, it's hard to find people that
And this isn't a new position anyway, we, we just haven't had it for a couple of years.
Right.
So.
I pretty much was handling everything that, that I created that threw at me.
Okay.
I make motion for, Mr. Ranslow.
Second? Alright, any more, more discussion?
Do you have anything you wanna share with us?
I, Laura Corrigan.
Okay.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, and that term
So you'll be getting a letter in the mail
Yeah.
Advising you to come in and meet with the town clerk. He'll have to be sworn in.
Mm-hmm.
So just keep an eye for that in the mail, okay?
Alright, and then that term will, will end on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, at which time he can be reappointed if he wishes. Okay, next we have for council one.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you very much. For council on aging, um, a term which expires also on June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen, and it's gonna fill an unexpired term, would be Judith Monroe. And then, um, we have also for the Green Energy Committee alternate, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. We have Trish Benoit Rudin, which is our clerk over at the police station. She, she does a fine job there, so I'm sure she'll be a, a great help to the Green Energy. Um, and she's also um, very, very helpful with, with grant writing in town, so. Uh, I think that would be a great asset for the Green Energy. So. You can appoint both under one? So motion
I'll make the motion to appoint Judith Monroe to the council on aging and Trish Benoit Rudin to the Green Energy Committee as an alternate. Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Trish is already helping us out.
Yeah. Yeah, she's, she's doing the work, she may as well join. Alright, next we have Executive Secretary's report.
I just have one quick thing this evening, uh, which is somewhat related to appointments. Um, if you recall, a couple of meetings back, um, the board um, adjusted its motion with respect to the Centennial Committee because they were having some problems getting a quorum. Um, we're asking if, um, or the Centennial Committee is asking to adjust that one more time um, by including the language, "In the event, however, that a quorum of six regular members cannot be achieved for a duly posted meeting, in order to address the agenda, agenda business at hand, any or all of the three ex officio members, which was the police chief, the executive secretary, and the town clerk, who are present at such meeting, may participate and serve as voting members for that meeting." So what this is saying is that if of the regular appointed members, there aren't enough to make quorum,
Okay.
If the other three town officials are present, they can be counted.
Okay.
Almost like an alternate.
Exactly, yeah.
Alright.
So the board is willing to approve of that, greatly appreciate it.
Alright, well, I don't have a problem.
Motion approved?
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And that's all I have.
Excellent. Um, oh, you know what, I forgot that.
That's okay.
I forgot an appointment for uh, uh, the finance.
No, no, he does that, that was just
Oh, alright, okay, so we, we will want, thank Mr. Michael Foster from Eight Lincoln Street for volunteering for a very well-paid job. Thank you. And that's it. Now, all business. We have the transportation contract. Now, is anything on here different from previous?
What do we end up with, Helen?
Nope, um, it's, everything's pretty much the same. We're with Telstone again. He was actually the only um, bidder on it, but he does have a history of always being the low bid anyway, so it's not very surprising.
Yeah.
The fact that we are in with Blackstone or on the Norfolk Aggie bus route really decreases it quite a bit for us, so it's beneficial.
Yeah.
So you'll be signing two originals and the board will be authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
And this has gone through legal, whether this is your previous
This hasn't, but it's the standard contract.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to the board to authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Second? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
So, um, now, are we definitely only dropping two out of, out of district kids?
My understanding, as of the last email from the district administration, is now we only have one student at each of the two out of district schools, one at Tri-County and one at Norfolk Aggie, um, which is contrary to what we budgeted for. We budgeted and we're told during budget season, we would have two in each. So one um, has dropped from the school.
I believe you have.
Unfortunately, that doesn't affect our transportation costs, whether you have one or twenty, it's the same, but
But the tuition, yeah, tuition's a big, well, that's great, great move. Okay. And next we have Thirty-Sixth Central Street.
Can I, uh, point of order? I'd just like to read this.
Yeah.
In order to avoid the presumption of conflict of interest, I wish to disclose that I am the executor and trustee of the family estate for the property located at Thirty-Nine Central Street, which is the abutter to the property being discussed at Thirty-Sixth Central Street, both located in the town of Noble, Massachusetts.
Okay.
Duly noted.
Okay, so. And as, as you know, there have been many concerns raised and verbal complaints received on, in connection with the structural condition of, of the above referenced property over the last eight, eighteen months or so. The building inspector visited the property and has been deemed, has deemed it dangerous. Additionally, the chief of police and fire agrees that the building is hazardous and should be addressed immediately. Michael Fitzpatrick consulted the town council and, and issued the proper notice of order to the, to the owners of the property. Considering the severe condition of the property, at this time, I recommend that the board of selectmen vote as follows. To order the building inspector to secure the premises at Thirty-Sixth Central Street such that it is no longer dangerous to life or limb by boarding up all potential methods of, of egress, of ingress and egress, as well as openings to the weather. End quote. The board of selectmen must advise how the cost of this matter will be paid from the board of selectmen expenses, reserve fund transfer, et cetera. Once the building is secured, Mike should work with the treasurer collector to, to certain lien for the, for the expenditure is, is placed on the property, so. In the event they sell it, we're gonna lien on it, we, the town will be reimbursed for whatever expenses we put into it. Now, but right now, it's the safety of the, of residents.
The last time I looked, it appears that the owners of that property have, uh, back taxes totaling around seventeen thousand dollars.
Yep.
Actually telling a story.
So, I mean, what's the chances the town may end up owning this property?
Not likely. We've been advised not to pursue that.
Okay. I wouldn't wanna, not in this condition, but I'm just curious. Okay.
So what happened for if she
What if somebody just throws their hands in the air and says?
Sure, somebody, if somebody comes and pays the back taxes, um, they could certainly sit with the treasurer and, and work on that, but
But I mean, what if the current owners decide and just walk away completely?
Well, I think that's pretty much what has happened.
Yeah. So we'll just keep putting plywood on the
Exactly.
On the holes as they come.
Well, the land's got value to it, so that's about it.
But it doesn't help your property value.
Don't, don't worry about that.
So, anyway, alright, well, so I need a motion for what I read in the
Do we know how much we're looking at?
I think it's under a thousand dollars, a few hundred, I think, to board it up.
Cause I'm thinking, I mean, this is classic reserve fund transfer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we take it out of our expenses, what, what else is gonna come, you know, we've got enough issues.
Yep.
So, with needing little money here and there, so I'm thinking, you know, for something like this, then I, I think this is, you know, really falls into the, what the reserve fund is for.
Yeah.
And I would, um, I'd make the motion to order the building inspector to secure the premise of Thirty-Sixth Central Street such that it is no longer dangerous to life or limb by boarding up all the potential methods of ingress and egress, as well as openings to the weather from the reserve fund transfer, with a reserve fund transfer.
Second? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, let's carry that.
If it goes over, what, a thousand, we should know about it, Helen, or is there, maybe a cap on it, or?
No. Boards and nails.
I know, I mean, how much could it be, but
The plywood's gonna cost more than the weight. Anyway, um, next we have new business. Uh, first one will be town hall maintenance and repairs.
Did you wanna discuss that?
No.
Now, well, did you want to inform the public, or would you like me to do so?
Uh, you, if you don't mind, because you, I've been away, number one, I read the emails, but you know firsthand of what's
Um, I'll make it very brief. Uh, we did learn last week that we do have a significant mold problem in the basement of the town hall. Um, we knew we had a little bit of a mold problem, but once we started getting into it, we realized it was far above and beyond what we had expected. Um, we did need to call in the health inspector, um, who did advise that it is black mold, so it does need to be, um, treated and removed.
Okay.
Um, I have spoken with the insurance company and I was advised that the town is covered for mold remediation up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so they will be here tomorrow.
Who will be here tomorrow?
The contractor who will be doing the mold remediation. They're starting tomorrow morning.
And how many bids did you get to do this?
This is the, through the insurance company.
They hired it.
They, they hired
I, I understand that, but my, my problem is you have X amount of dollars to play with, an insurance company. Does anybody have any general idea what it's gonna cost?
I'm waiting to hear back from the adjuster as to what the estimate is on the total. Um, but they will do twenty-five thousand dollars worth of it and we'll take it from there.
The reason why I'm saying this is I'm wondering if, I've dealt with insurance companies a lot. And my question to them is, usually they send in a couple of companies to evaluate it, give some kind of a ballpark. Not an open book and do whatever you want up to twenty-five. I'd like to know what we're gonna get out of that and how far they're gonna go with it. I mean, how far, how bad is it? I mean, they usually give you some kind of report before they even start that it went this far, we can do this much for X amount of dollars. It seems that the insurance company just picked one of the vendors and they're gonna come in here and start, correct?
Yeah, well, and they've got the right to do that, um. I, the, the contractor didn't leave here until late this afternoon, close to three. Um, so by the time he got back to his office, I don't know, um, it was probably close to the end of the day. I got a call from the secretary saying they'll be here in the morning. By that time, the adjuster from the insurance company was gone from his office, so. I do have a call into him, um, to obtain additional information, but I don't have that at this time. All I know is that they've been authorized to start in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so that is where that stands.
Okay. Okay, so the next thing we have is, uh, the elementary school water. So we have, um, the new portable water tank, which we have been reading, uh, getting some readings for the past, what, six months or so?
Right, we actually got some updated information, um, late, uh, Friday afternoon. Um, the test results came back on the second round of water testing, um, which actually, for the most part, eliminated the raw water and the tank.
Okay.
Uh, the water taken directly out of the tank was fine. They've narrowed it down to a certain area of piping around the green sand filter.
Okay.
So that's good news for us in that it's not the tank, um, there are some things that need to be done so that those contaminant levels will decrease.
So it's something in the conduits of the water?
They believe it's the solvent, the solvent used to join the piping.
Oh, we talked about this back when Charlie was on.
Right.
Yep.
Um.
But they said no, cause
So they, well, there's some contradictory information between engineers and DEP, so. Um, I think going forward with the meeting on Monday is important so that we can have all the players in the same room.
Okay.
Um, I spent the better part of my day today, Ian, Friday, on the telephone with DEP and engineers and water operators and, you know, it's all great to me. So, you know, I feel like the town is kinda stuck in the middle, being told by DEP, you have to do this.
Yep.
But one engineer is saying, you don't wanna do that, and it's, it's, um, it's gotten a little ridiculous. So I think we really need to sit down Monday night and figure out what needs to be done.
We're meeting onsite?
Onsite up at the elementary school. Six thirty.
Six thirty. Are we coming back here? Do we have a space up there to meet?
Oh, we're in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have, um, approved that through the, um, the elementary school.
I, I spent a few minutes with Mr. Ferrari today and, uh, he reviewed all the reports that Helen divided. And, um, he indicated, feel good news that, you know, the, the sampling that they did uh, traces that problem to a specific area, and he knows exactly where it is and it could have been picked up earlier. And so, it looks like a very solvable problem, and he's confident that it, uh
Okay. Well, as long as we're not paying for it. Well, as long as we're not paying for it.
Well, well, Mr. Ferrari has volunteered his services. He's working pro bono as a favor. Um, however, if you recall, we were urged, uh, by DEP to get in a third-party engineer, which is why Mr. Ferrari was taken off the case, if you will. We are still paying for the third-party engineer.
Yeah.
Um, but Mr. Ferrari has been, uh, very cooperative and told me that he will not be charging the town, the town a dime for his services for this work, so we appreciate that.
Yep. Definitely. Okay. Alright, so we're having a meeting next Monday night at the elementary school, and that's at six-thirty, right?
Six-thirty, in the cafeteria.
Yep. So, okay, so that's it for that?
Mm-hmm. Did the board wish to, I think I have, um, emailed you a couple of other issues that were of some concern regarding the elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would the chair like me to include those on the same agenda for that evening, or?
Yeah. While everybody's gonna be there, we may as well get as much accomplished as we can.
Might as well get it all out, come on.
Alright, so, so this water problem, where they think they've got it narrowed down to now, has this been replaced recently, or?
It's unclear to me whether this was the Phase One work that was just done by Skilling's, or if this was a problem that existed prior to that work. Um, the small water operator is now in the process of preparing a timeline, which shows exactly, um, the water test results compared to the date that the work was done, so we can see if that problem, problem existed prior to, or if it's because of that work.
Okay. Alright.
There's also, um, some conflicting feelings with respect to Phase Two. If you recall, the board had actually voted and approved to proceed with Phase Two, uh, at just under twenty thousand dollars. In my conversations with Mr. Ferrari today, he strongly urges the board to not proceed with Phase Two. Um, having been, having actually built that system and designed that system, he does not feel the Phase Two work, um, is gonna do anything for the problems. DEP feels otherwise, as does the third-party engineer. Um, so I feel as though I've ordered the work, a cease on that work. There's no sense in having that work done if the person who designed that system says it's not going to, you know, do anything for us. Um, and I've told the third-party engineer respectfully that I feel as though Mr. Ferrari needs to express his feelings to DEP as to why he feels that way. Um, you know, ultimately, we do have to listen to DEP.
Right.
Um, but in my argument today with the water operators, we have to listen to DEP, but it's coming out of our pocket in the end. And if this was, you know, a two-hundred-dollar item, that would be one thing, but it's almost twenty thousand, so we're not just gonna.
Really?
Well, we have to address the issue. We don't have to do what DEP, we have to solve the problem under DEP's, but we don't have to go their suggested route.
But, well, they have to approve, they have to approve the route.
They do.
And they weren't happy with what Mr. Ferrari had been suggesting, um, which is why they encouraged the third-party engineer, but Mr. Ferrari insists that this isn't gonna do anything, so we need to get the three of them in a room and let them figure it out.
Yep.
So, let's just throw out hypotheticals. So let's say it doesn't fix it. So who, who ends up on the hook?
Me.
Is that us? Well, well, I mean, let me rephrase that.
But if it's me.
Who, who? Who, whose work was substandard?
Well, that's what they're trying to find out.
Well, they're trying to find out if it was the?
That's where we're at right now, Bob. That's why they're doing samples.
The materials or the work?
So that's why they're doing all these samples, because they're gonna, they're gonna iron it right down to a specific area, and that area, if it was done by an outside contractor, is liable for that work. That's what they're trying to find out right now, or call, the way the lingo and the, and the wording is put.
But I, I think, to your point, Helen, I think, I think we need to understand that whole timeline thing.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause who knows?
That's what Ferrari's doing.
It's all in writing. We know. Mr. Ferrari knows. It's all in writing. He's gonna, he's gonna prove it out of what and where the system is failing, and if somebody did the work, who's responsible for it? That's what we're waiting for.
So he's not done any of the work?
He designed it.
No, he designed it.
He designed it.
He's been out of the picture for over a year now.
Yeah.
So what he's doing is helping the town to find out and isolate exactly where the problem is, tell Helen, this is where the problem is, this is who did the work, and this is where it's failing, and then we take it from there.
And he will provide a comprehensive report. He's doing it on his own.
That's where, that's where we're at now, waiting for him. And he's doing that for no money, to the town, which is awful nice of him. And I also think personally, once this is said and done, the board ought to send Mr. Ferrari a thank you for going over and beyond.
Because I remember, what, last, maybe a year and a half ago, we received a whole list of solvents and, and they were supposedly all approved, but, like, somebody on the board said, I don't remember who it was, it doesn't matter, was, how do we know they physically used those solvents?
Right. But when that, when that issue?
Something else on the truck.
Right. They were, oh, we ran out, let's just grab that one, whatever.
When we were discussing that issue, um, that's when ultimately it turned out to be the interior of the tank.
Right.
The tank was delaminating. Um, so that issue has been resolved. They recoded that. If you recall, Flush Development got an updated.
Yep.
Um.
Remember that.
Warranty for that, which has now expired, but, um, it's not the tank. So, you know, if they did use solvent that isn't NSF compliant, my understanding is if it sits in the sun stagnant, or if it's in a warm room, such as a boiler room, it can begin to break down. So if that happened over the summer while the school was closed and that room got hot, um, it is possible that it could be the solvent breaking down, so.
So, okay. And also, we do have bottled water for next week?
I do not know that for a fact. The administration has been informed that they do need to be on bottled water.
Okay.
Whether they've actually purchased that and have it ready, I do not know.
Alright, but we told the school that they need to, okay?
They haven't informed the parents.
Okay.
It's been nothing.
Okay.
No calls, no letters, no feedback on their website.
Okay. Alright, well.
We'll add that on the agenda for Monday, because that, again, could be one of those items that they feel isn't their job.
'Cause when do they go back? Thursday?
Thursday, September fifth.
Oh, after Wednesday, okay.
You know the day?
So we have a little bit of?
I have to find daycare until, until then, 'cause I, I go back way before then.
So we're, we still got a little bit of time?
Well, the teachers will be in there the Tuesday, actually, later that day, though.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
If not, the board's setting up their rooms with their own children, running through the halls.
Yep. Okay.
Alright, any, any more discussion on that?
Okay, so next, we have, um, a members forum for the highway department. Okay. It's the last meeting. I wasn't here. You guys tabled this for the highway department to discuss again? Is that the way I'm reading this?
Yeah.
Okay, so?
This, this kinda resulted from bullet points that I accumulated.
Yep.
I shared them with Helen. Um, I, I emailed, I communicated with, uh, the highway severe on a few points, uh, via, uh, email. And, uh, the concerns that I have is, uh, Chapter Ninety. For all of fiscal 2013, paperwork hasn't been submitted for Chapter Ninety reimbursement.
Right.
And as you know, the, the finance committee got finances to the point where we would continue to fund with, with the reimbursements on Chapter Ninety.
Right.
Um, that was one point. Another one is the anticipated, uh, delivery date of the, the new dump truck the town meeting approved. Uh, they approved financing that, uh, via, um, a state house note.
Right.
Uh, but to initiate that process, the town accountant needs to know the anticipated delivery date for, for the, uh, truck.
Okay.
And as of this date, we don't know when that truck is gonna be delivered, or what the state is, and the concern is that that might have to go back for another boat at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, the obsolescence of the two thousand two, three fifty, uh, pickup truck has just been sitting there. The title was missing. Uh, we got a replacement title for it, so that would now allow the town to sell it while it still has value, 'cause I think, only thing wrong with that truck is the bed, it's rotted out, but, you know, if you want no-mile three fifty truck, you know, you know, I think that has market value. The present highway dump truck that we have, uh, we don't have a title for it. Uh, apparently there is, uh, it looks like there's a lien on that truck, and, uh, so we're trying to track that down. We, we, we need the title so that we could bring the town's vehicle inventory up to date.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's being tracked down by Mrs. Coffin.
Alright.
Um, then there are other issues that, you know, we, uh, we could discuss with, with the highway severe. Um, you know, I've kinda backed off, I won't have it televised, but maybe, as, um, Jennifer suggested, that, uh, you know, we, we have, he, uh, he's aware now of what our concerns are, in, in, in a workshop or some, some type, maybe at six-thirty or on the following week, that, uh, we could, you know, get answers to this. Uh, when I sent my email out, uh, Mr. Malali was going off on vacation. Uh, he responded to me this morning that he is working on answers to those specifically for the, the priority questions that I had.
Okay.
So I'd like to get a sense of the board, how, how, how they feel on, on sitting down with Mr. Malali and resolving these issues.
Well, we could, we could have, see if he wants to come in, uh, we are, the first Monday, September third, we already have quite a few reports of town officials, right? I know we got the electrical inspector.
I don't have those on my calendar yet. Um, the secretary's scheduled, so she'll get those to me.
If Brian want, but it'll probably take a while, though, with Brian, right, to go over all this with him, unless he wanted to come in at six-thirty, you know, following?
Yeah, I would think a, a separate meeting would be better.
Yeah, 'cause?
Well, I think we need to remember that he is elected.
Yep.
And he doesn't need to come to us.
Oh, he doesn't.
And I think in the past, it's sometimes relationships with some boards who aren't, who don't have to answer to us, can get a little tense, and I think we need the answers, and we can report on the answers, but I think it should be, um, in an environment where, where it's welcoming and productive.
Yep.
So, um.
I mean, unless we wanna just have two, two of our members meet with him at a whatever day or night.
Do we wanna see his answers first and then figure out?
I mean, maybe he'll, maybe he'll feel more comfortable that way, too.
Did he indicate? Uh, you, you've been emailing. I haven't spoken to him.
Sent one email with the questions. He responded that he'd be working on them.
Okay, so he didn't, like, make a preference or allude to format?
If he?
Well, send him an email and ask him what he think he'll be, uh, be able to address some of this stuff to, to help us out.
Because?
You know, this, some of these things have?
Chapter Ninety is a big?
Right, big net.
Yeah, for finance, uh, for the budget, and then all, as well as the new dump truck, you know. She, Marilyn's gotta know, gotta be ready for that when that day comes. I mean, the day they dropped it, four weeks later, they're gonna be wanting a check, you know? So.
And also, in, um, making attempts on my own to contact Mass Highway, I learned that our representative of many years, Katie Murphy, and I'm sure Jen's heard that name, uh, has left, so she's no longer with them. So, um, I've just got some concerns, and I would like to question Mr. Malali on if he's made contact with our new rep and who that is.
Okay. And then stormwater compliance. Now, if we're not compliant with that, does that affect Chapter Ninety reimbursement?
No, but we could be fined by the EPA.
So in a roundabout way, it affects the reimbursement?
It's a federal mandate.
Yep. Alright, well.
Some of the wealthier towns actually set up, uh, stormwater districts where the residents in the area are assessed money, uh, you know, for stormwater control.
Alright, well, let's see. I mean, he just came back from vacation, so let's give him a chance to address these issues and get back to us. If he preferred to meet with two of us, or the whole board, and then we'll, but we gotta move fairly quickly.
Yeah, this has?
Especially on the Chapter Ninety.
Well, it's too late for, uh, free cash anyway, so.
Yeah.
So our free cash for FY thirteen will be, will be low.
Yeah. Okay, well. Okay, that sound good? We'll go with that rule. Okay, so final public forum. Nobody? Uh, why is that funny? Alright, so our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, September third, two thousand thirteen, at seven PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center. Um, just a reminder that Labor Day, Monday, September second, the town hall will be closed, and which is why our meeting is on September third. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Take your time.